Good evening, everyone. We will call the April 16, 2012 City Council Meeting to order. First order of business is roll call. Charlene.
Nordstrom. Mason. Doyle. Sasso. Davis. Peterson. Roberts. Brown. Wright. Laurenti. We have Quorum.
Next order of business is invocation, and we'll recognize Major Jim Beardsley from the Salvation Army. Everyone, please rise.
Shall we pray? O gracious God, our heavenly Father, hear my prayer. This evening I ask for two things. The first is for wisdom. Wisdom for each man and woman of this council. Give them the wisdom they will need as they guide and direct and lead our great city. Father, we ask for patience for each and every one of them as well. Patience to understand the many that sometimes don't understand their guiding and their leading in our lives. But, Father, we leave them into your capable hands to guide, to direct. Bless them this evening and every evening and every meeting throughout the rest of this year. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Major. Next order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Is there any items to add or change for the agenda tonight? We'll first go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make an announcement so that everybody's aware. As many people as possible are invited to a public meeting this Thursday evening, April 19th, 6:00 PM, at the Journey Museum. We'd like to -- this is Ward Two is doing a town hall meeting over there in the Wells Fargo Theater. Like to invite as many people as possible that can attend that. We'll be talking about a variety of different subjects. We'll also get an update of what's taking place at the Journey Museum as well. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity.
We will add that as item 72B. Are there any additional items to add to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition? A motion by Brown, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1967. There we go. Larry Mace left South Dakota to serve with the United States Air Force, rising to the rank of Colonel, and retiring in 1998 with a distinguished 30-year career. Assignments during his career included security, police squadron commander at Ellsworth, also Travis Air Force Base, and Lackenheath, England. He was chief of security police at Chick Sands, England, and a stint in the Pentagon as staff officer. Nuclear security in the office of the Inspector General, Provost Marshal for the Alaskan Command at Elmendorf, duty chief of staff, security police, headquarter Pacific Air Forces, Hickam Air Force Base, and his career culminated as a commander for security police, security forces, at Kirtland Air Force Base in New Mexico. He is a graduate of the U.S. Army War College and a distinguished graduate of the Squadron Officer School and Air Command and Staff College. He's a veteran of Vietnam. His decorations include the Legion of Merit with one oak leaf cluster, the Bronze Star, the Meritorious Service Medal, the Air Force Achievement Medal, and the Vietnamese Cross of Gallantry and with Palm. So, the unit and individual awards. In January, he and his wife Patricia celebrated their 45th wedding anniversary. Congratulations. And they have two children. After serving his country, Colonel Mace returned to South Dakota to serve the Rapid City community where he worked to provide mentors and role models to young boys and girls as a case manager for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Black Hills, and is presently international coordinator for foreign exchange students of the Aspect Foundation. He has been nominated for Veteran of the Month for distinguished service, dedication, and commitment to our country. Thank you for all you have done.
Rapid City's been my home since 1969. My wife lived here during the time I was Vietnam, and we've called it home ever since. And I will tell you that it's a wonderful place to live as a member of the Air Force, and it's certainly a great place to live as a retiree. I've been welcomed into this community. I love this place. Thank you.
Now, Gary Brown would like to present you with a city pin. Gary?
All right. Pin this on you, but I'll give it to your wife to do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Nothing to do. One thing that stayed with him, and telling he still has all the military training that he had. He's a neighbor. He drives us nuts outside with his broom, his little wispie thing. He cleans these driveway off that cracks out. That's pressure. That's pressure. He's a great person to have in the neighborhood, and just a great gentleman. Thank you very much.
Captain Deb Cady and Police Chief Steve Allender could come up, please. Captain Cady, we want to take a moment to acknowledge your distinguished service to the city of Rapid City and the Police Department upon occasion of your retirement. You served our community from July 22, 1986. I was in the sixth grade. To April 30, 2012. Sorry about that. And I understand that there are some nefarious plots underway to have some parties later, and Steve Allender will talk about that perhaps.
Well, thanks. Deb Cady is leaving the employment of the city running out early after only 25 years, nine months, and eight days. We've tried to get her to stay around for another 25 years, but she won't. Deb's had a great career. She started out as a patrol officer. She went to the Drug Task Force. She was made a detective and worked criminal cases. She went back out to the drug unit and supervised that drug unit, kept getting promoted along the way, came back to field services as a sergeant, was promoted shortly after, and was the first female lieutenant in the history of our department. Worked in that capacity for some time, and if that wasn't good enough, she became the first female captain in the history of our department. And she's done an awesome job. We've tried our hardest to get her to work in all different areas of the building so that some of her will rub off on the rest of us. And we're going to be very sad to see her leave, but it's her time, and we support her, and I'm spending my time right now trying to find a replacement that can be almost as good as her. So, thank you, Deb.
Well, thank you very much. I have to thank Chief Allender and Chief Tezen in the back there, and the late Chief Hinnies who actually hired a college kid straight from Nebraska and came here and made this my home and made the RCPD my second family. So, how could I leave? It's only been great because of all the wonderful people I've worked with, people in the community and all the support. It's the only way I've been able to reach what I have today. So, for that, I'm thanking you, and I'm going to miss everybody, but I'm not leaving. Rapid's still my home, and I'll still be here.
The Ward Two Alderman could come up, please, and Charles Henry. The April 2012 Citizen of the Month is an individual whose second career has been public service to our community. We are pleased to present this award to Charles Henry. Charles is a resident of Ward Two and was nominated by Scott Bader from the Club for Boys and Ward Two Council Representatives, Richie Nordstrom and Steve Laurenti. Charles started attending the Club for Boys at an early age, and it soon became like a second home to him. He loved to help out in any way and would often rather run an activity than participate in it. He's never forgotten those formative years and is now giving back to the community by his involvement in many different ways. He's still very active with the Club for Boys and volunteers between 20 and 30 hours a week, filling in when needed and helping with special events. He's also involved with Iwana, a national youth ministry organization. Although Charles has had health issues, he's continued to seek ways to help others. One way he's done that is by being an advocacy counselor and trainer for people with disabilities. He's traveled to peer and given presentation to represent people with disabilities, and he's never -- he has even taken first aid training in order to be in a better position to help others. Charles' eagerness to help others shows true compassion, commitment, and dedication to our community. Thank you, Charles, for your dedication to our community.
And now the executive proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the city of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and whereas the April Citizen of the Month is awarded to Charles Henry, a resident of Ward Two in Rapid City, and whereas Charles has volunteered his time and services to many different local organizations, and whereas although Charles had -- has had his own health issues, he has continued to seek ways to help others. Now therefore, we, Alderman Steve Laurenti and Alderman Richie Nordstrom of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of the Mayor Sam Quaker, do hereby proclaim Charles Henry as the April 2012 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition of his innovation and leadership and the many contributions he has made to our community. Thank you.
on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We do have one general public comment before we go into item three. That is from Justine Estes from the Black Hills Chamber Music Society. Justine, identify yourself, and the floor is yours.
My name is Justine Estes, and I'm the president of Black Hills Chamber Music Society, and I'm here to talk to you about that this evening. Mayor Quaker, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council, we very much appreciate the chance to speak to you this evening. Our organization, Black Hills Chamber Music Society, is a member of the Allied Arts Organization, which is the organization in Rapid City which distributes money to various arts organizations. We are fortunate enough to be part of that, and money from you folks comes to us through the Allied Arts. And we are very grateful for every single penny. Believe me, we couldn't do it without you. And tonight, I'm here to tell you what happens to that money once it comes into our treasury. Figure it's the right thing to do, to let you know where your money goes. We have basically two programs. Number one is outreach, and number two is a concert series. We have five projects in our outreach. The first one is an elder music project. Number two is music in the schools project. Number three, we go to Ellsworth Air Force Base project with music. Number four, we go out to the Black Hills Children's Home. And number five, we have what we cosponsor with Dakota Choral Union, the Young Vocal Artist Competition. That's for students who wish to make voice their career. Okay. I would like to just briefly talk about the elder music project for just a second. This will give you an idea of how the rest of the projects are organized. First of all, we're a board. We have 14 members. We're all volunteers. We don't get to take home any kind of a paycheck, and we are a working board. We do all the work for all the projects. We organize, we implement, and then we hire local musicians, and that's where part of your money goes, is when we hire those local musicians to do the performing. So, say we have 12 old folks homes, I shouldn't call them that, Homes for the Elderly. We have 12 of those, and every year, we present four concerts to each one of those homes. And we organize it, we implement it, we hire local musicians. They're all professional musicians. Some play with the symphonies, some don't, and they go and they do the performing. So, that's where part of your money goes. The other part goes to our concert series. In our concert series, we have five chamber music concerts. We hire musicians, professional musicians who are regional -- okay, thank you -- regional, national, and international musicians of the highest quality we can afford, and they come and they perform chamber music concerts, five of them. And you might say, well, what is exactly a chamber music concert? Well, it's been called a conversation between friends. So, if you can think about when you're together with a few of your friends and you talk about the things that are meaningful to you, this is the same thing, except it's done in music. There are no words, all music. And so, we thank you for -- is it time for me to quit?
It is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a concert on Sunday if you'd like to come. You are all invited. Thank you.
Seeing no further general public comment items, we will go to item number three. Recognize our library director, Greta Chapman.
Evening, Council. I'm going to turn this over to Jim Olson, who's the chair of the library board, and you do have links to the information that he's going to provide, and I would also acknowledge Rod Pettigrew, who is vice chair of the board, is here this evening, and Ron Sasso, who's the council liaison.
Thank you, Greta. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff that are here this evening, appreciate your interest in the library and giving us a few minutes this evening, Mayor, to share some of the good news from the Rapid City Public Library. You know, we think that as we look around the country and we compare what we're doing in Rapid City and the Rapid City Public Library, that we're right there with a world-class operation in terms of cities of this size and what we provide to this community. And if you look at the references that have been given to you, you will see that we have had some outstanding growth in this past year in the terms of the use of the library. And I think it's important that we all recognize that libraries continue to evolve based upon the needs of their patrons, and this library has been evolving really thanks to a planning process that was started a number of years ago to create a strategic plan for the library. And that strategic plan really permits us to make long-range and year-to-year decisions as members of the Board of Trustees. And that planning process involves the Board of Trustees as well as the entire staff of the library so that we all are up to date on what the plans are for the library, what the needs are for the library, and where we spend, where we allocate the money that comes to us for the library, because we want to get the most out of that money. We want to provide the services to this community, and we think that we're -- this shows you some evidence of those things that are going on and that we are meeting some of those demands. When you look at the increases of usage that are going on in the public library today, new borrowers, 13% growth in one year, drive-through window use is up 21%, youth cards up 26%. I think that's great. Holds placed on materials that people want, that's up 35%. Online, our social networking content is up 60%. Database use is up 1% more than that. RSS feed access is almost doubled. Wireless use has doubled. We have, we're seeing two times as many patrons using materials -- they're using two times the national average, excuse me, of libraries. So, we're seeing a lot of growth in the use of the library, and we feel like we're focused on what the needs are for the library, and we're constantly listening and planning to go forward. I think one of our big successes has been the fact that we've managed to make changes to our -- what is it?
Integrated Library System.
Yeah, the ILS. They use all these, the Integrated Library System, but it's the method that we use for accessing materials that we don't even have in our own library. And we've created, or we purchased a new system a couple of years ago to really give us much better access to materials at other libraries and at other locations. And we're doing a much better job of accessing that for much less money as a result of that. And that's all come about because of the planning and the hard work of particularly our library staff and the involvement of the board in making those decisions to go forward. There are, you can see, as you go through these, we have strategic plan programs and values that are outlined for you. If you turn to the strategic plan update, it gives you an outline and a picture and some information about what we're doing with that. I think that it's been a real interesting time for me to be on the library board. We've, in many ways, moved the library ahead maybe a little faster than some people would have wanted. I think it was a real challenge to the staff because they've totally changed the way they operate the library. We all remember when you used to go into the library and you couldn't talk, and the librarian was behind a desk, and there was just kind of a barrier there. You know, those barriers are coming down all over the library, and you can come in and a librarian will meet you and will have remote access to where he or she can provide you with information to find the materials you're looking for. We're really proud of this library, and if you haven't had a chance to get over there lately to see it, please do, and let Greta know that you're coming, and she'll make sure that there are staff members who are available to share some of the good things that are going on at the library. And I don't know if it's still available, but we had a state-of-the-library meeting here a month ago, and that, if you go online and look for that at the library's website, is very interesting because of some of the creative ideas you'll see and some of the reports of what has been going on. So, thank you all very much for your support of the library. Come down and use it, and enjoy this great asset that Rapid City has. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We have a motion to acknowledge the update. We have a motion by Brown and a second by Sasso to acknowledge the update. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to open public comment for items four through 47, please. Motion by Roberts, second by Mason. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Would you not have any public comments for items four through 47? Did I miss anyone? Is there anyone that wanted to speak on items four through 47? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on consent, items four through 45. If you'd like an item pulled for separate consideration, please hit your light. We'll first go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Item 23.
Item 23.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 28 and 37.
Okay. So far, we have 23, 28, and 37. Any additional items? Any additional items? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve items four through 47 with the exception of 23, 28, and 37?
Second.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Peterson. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 23. Jerry, if you could read this into the -- I'm sorry, Gary, if you could read this into the record for us. Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 23 is to acknowledge the Historic Preservation Commission Report, and I move to acknowledge.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Brown and a second by Roberts to acknowledge, and we'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry? Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. Gary. Traditionally, we've developed at Public Works is to bring in divisions, managers, and so forth to help us get to know them and understand their work a little better. And we've done it with Public Works and with Parks and Recreation. And recently, I asked Jean Kestloff if she would work with her commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, to come in and talk to us, and she did. She did a very good job. And it was on the consent calendar, but I really asked if she would attend this evening. If I'm correct, May is Historic Preservation Month, correct? And you all received a little map that we did a couple of years ago tied in with a project that was done with the commission on renewing interest and knowledge about our history of railroads in Rapid City. So I just asked Jean if she'd come up and spend five minutes with us and, for the benefit of the entire council and the members of this community that are here today, what the Historic Preservation Commission does, why they do it, and the method and how we as a council fit in. So Jean, you've got five minutes.
I'm ready for my little slideshow. That doesn't count in the five minutes? No. Okay. The Rapid City Historic Preservation Commission consists of 10 members appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council. It is a quasi-judicial body whose decisions are a recommendation to the State Historic Preservation Office in Pier. Board members should consist of professionals from areas such as history, architecture, archaeology, to name a few, and non-professional volunteers, all having interests, experience, and/or knowledge in historic preservation. The mission of the commission is to preserve the quality of life and natural environment of the community and enhance the economic vitality and diversity of the community through preservation and restoration of historically and/or architecturally significant buildings and sites. The commission was established in 1975 and was awarded the status of Certified Local Government under the Department of the Interior National Park Service in June of 1986. The commission is authorized under the chapter 2.68 of the Rapid City Code of Ordinances and has bylaws that define duties and functions as well as membership, officers, and meetings. In addition to a memorandum of joint powers agreement between the City of Rapid City and the State Office of History exists to define and direct the implementation of the South Dakota Codified Law 119A11.1, review process pertaining to historic resources in Rapid City. The CLG program is also the source of the commission's grant funding. The CLG must enforce state or local legislation for the designation and protection of historic properties, have established an adequate and qualified historic preservation commission by state or local legislation, maintain a system for the survey and inventory of historic properties, provide for adequate public participation in the local historic preservation programs, including the process for recommending properties for nomination to the national register, and satisfactorily perform other responsibilities delegated to it by the State Historic Preservation Office, officer by mutual agreement. One of the primary responsibilities of the CLG is to participate in the review and compliance procedures as outlined in South Dakota Codified Law, commonly referred to as 11.1. Projects subject to these reviews include, but are not limited to, those that require building permits, demolition permits, new construction, and the rehabilitation of historic properties located within the boundaries of the historic districts, as well as those listed individually on the state or national register of historic places. The 11.1 review is to determine if a project will encroach upon damage or destroy historic properties. These are to be evaluated against the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation that has been adopted by the State of South Dakota as codified law. Historic preservation safeguards our community heritage, making it available for future generations, civic enjoyment, and educational activities. The conservation and maintenance of historic resources and scenic areas fosters civic beauty and bolsters community pride. Historic preservation shows us where we have been and where we are going. One of the prime benefits of preservation has always been education. By identifying and preserving these important contributions to our historical profile, we keep our living history alive for generations to come, generations that will have the past to learn from and from which to draw inspiration in the future. The greenest building is the one already built. In the 1990s, Arizona State University conducted a study of landfills across the nation called the Garbage Study. Our landfills are choked with over 30% demolition and construction debris. The biggest portion of that is made up of old-growth lumber. Change is inevitable and should be welcome, but it needs to be managed so that the city's distinctiveness is not destroyed and the historic character of the community is maintained. A historic building need not be a museum. Alterations that are sensitive to their history and architecture, along with proper maintenance, is all that is required to keep them a viable part of the community. Historic districts are living places, and their character is what attracts people to them and the community in the first place. Preserving architecturally and historically worthy buildings, along with constructing appropriate, compatible new ones that blend in with the area in style and scale, ensures those goals are realized. We've gone through all the technical, legal, and historical reasons for preservation. Let's get down to the one thing that everyone wants to hear: the economic benefits. The economic benefits of historic preservation are diverse. The following is from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. The cost savings from rehabilitating an existing structure can be between 3% and 16%, with the lifespan of a new building often being 30 to 40 years versus more than 100 years for most historic structures. This building is over 126 years old. Typical rehabilitation projects are 60% to 70% total labor cost, with laborers being mostly local, who in turn spend their money locally. Historic preservation increases property values. A study in Philadelphia found 131% sales price premium, while Texas reports an increased property value between 5% and 20%. The demolition of one building roughly 25 feet wide, up to 140 feet deep, wipes out the entire benefit of 1,344,000 recycled aluminum cans. Historic preservation directs development to places where infrastructure already exists. Education monies can be saved by rehabbing historic schools, often creating a better learning environment. 75% of all net new jobs in the U.S. are created by small businesses, with 60 cents of every dollar spent at these businesses remaining in the local economy versus 10 cents for national discounters. Historic preservation stimulates private and public investments, creates new businesses, generates new jobs, and generates a reinvesting ratio. Historic preservation tracks investments to communities by capitalizing on its own unique history. Historic preservation promotes heritage tourism. 78% of U.S. leisure travelers participate in cultural and/or heritage activities when traveling and spend on an average of $994 per trip. Historic preservation is an investment in older neighborhoods; therefore, it is an investment in inherently sustainable communities. Saving historic buildings and keeping our city healthy reduces pressure to pave our countryside. Historic preservation through the federal rehabilitation tax credits and various state preservation programs creates housing as it is often located close to services and public transportation, reducing costs for residents. In Nebraska, historic preservation generates $170 million a year. A total of $1.5 billion was spent on the rehabilitation of buildings in 2001 and 2005. 22 jobs were created for every $1 million spent on historic preservation, which supported 3,869 jobs in the state. Of the district studied, property values as a whole showed increase in historic districts. Bottom line, preservation is progress. Thank you.
Are you on the floor?
Thank you, Jean. To remind everyone that May is Historic Preservation Month, and there's been a display downstairs of Railroad 1. Is that what we'll call it? This was Calvin Coolidge arrived, I believe it was in 1927, by rail and spent the summer at the Summer White House at Coolidge High School here at Rapid City. There's a lot of history here we need to be proud of and preserve and respect and learn from. It helps make our summer nights enjoyable. It helps make our community unique. And this little map he gave you is a walking tour of our railroad industry from years ago, and we'll get more of those printed and out to the Journey and downstairs and so forth. With that, thank you, Jean. And if you have any questions, I guess she can handle them. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to bring the story forward.
And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thanks. I wanted to thank Jean and Karen and also the rest of the Historic Preservation Commission. I've served on it for about 18 months, and they really, I think, get a bad rap in the press because all the meetings I've attended, that they really go out of their way to try to help people, educate them, advise them, and strategies that they can use to try to improve their property. And anyway, I just wanted to give them a high five and thank them for all the work they do. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, if I may, make a request if any additional information that they have or extra materials that we can share with the Journey Museum or whatever contacts we need to make through the Journey Museum. I think I sure would appreciate it if we have that come forward with that, and we'll be talking about this more in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richie. We'll go to Ron Sasso.
One of the important things to always remember is that when something historic is gone, it is gone, and a piece of history is gone with it. Really appreciate everything that Historic Preservation continues to do. And one of the things that came up previously, just wanted to bring it forward as well, is there's a lot of information on bobyapp.com, and that's something that Historic Preservation has done a lot as far as bringing people in from the outside to help give opportunities for people to learn about preservation. So thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you, Ron. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
On the lighter side, I forgot to mention, for our benefit of our Public Works and other people, remember a week ago or so, we were talking about railroad crossings. I just to let you know, out here on Sixth Street, there used to be 11 crossings, and I think there were 12 over here on Fifth Street. Now we only have one.
We do have a motion on the floor to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 28. Jordan, can you read this in the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 28 is request for an exception from the consultant selection process for fire station number one.
Do we have a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
Motion by Davis, second by Peterson for approval, and we'll go to Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. After reading the memo on this and just deliberating on it for some time, I guess I'm kind of concerned about the... And the second or last paragraph where it says we would like to change the scope of the project and then move to add an exception to the consultant selection process, and I guess I'd like to just ask our city attorney exactly what state law says in dealing with professional services, especially with amounts over $50,000 or at $50,000.
We'll go to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Professional services projects or projects are not required to follow any specific set standard under state law. State law applies to bidding, which would be non-professional services. The city has adopted a consultant selection process by resolution. Therefore, by approving this by resolution, you would change that for this particular. But the requirements they're trying to meet aren't under state law, they're under the city's consultant selection process.
Appreciate that. The other part of this that I guess I'm kind of hoping to get some feedback from some of my colleagues, but while I agree that obviously, since they are the original people to bring this forward, Fennel Design, and bring forth, you know, forward some of the recommendations, they obviously would have an advantage. However, as a city, I guess I am wondering, do we want to, just because they may have an advantage, not allow others to compete in a typical selection process? I think there's a philosophical problem that, you know, should be addressed, and where do we stand as a city? Even though they may have an advantage, will we not allow others to compete? So I'll just lay the question before the floor and yield.
Thank you, Jordan. And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Do we have a good idea of how much time and money has been invested at this point on the first project?
We'll go to Tim Billings. Tim?
Thank you. At this point, I don't have those figures for you today, and actually, it was early enough in the process that it was a method of transferring from 10 Main Street to 10108 Main Street. And so I don't have an accurate figure for you this evening, but I can sure get that for you, so...
Okay. Was... And I guess because this is something we may be making a decision on, were there a lot of meetings that took place prior as far as them learning about the needs and, I guess, just trying to get a better gauge?
Yes, there were definitely numerous meetings that had occurred to get us to the point to where we're at. This process started some time ago and actually was put on hold when funding at the time was held. And then soon after we started moving forward with it again is when the other site, the second site, became available. And so then we started to shift efforts. It became obvious very early that the existing site wasn't going to be adequate, so... I don't know if I answered your question appropriately, but...
I guess probably as close as you can, given the question and the scope. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is for approval. Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would like to just ask one other additional question with this, and I direct it towards Mr. Billings. The first part of this was a determination of what we should do concerning the fire stations, and is the second part of this now dealing with the design work and then actually, you know, designing the building? Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
It's actually the initial component of it, right. We're still working through the space analysis, and that's really where the scope or the focus changes from an existing structure and the needs and the restrictions or hurdles, I should say, within that structure, and shifting that scope and space analysis to a newer structure. So it would be the initial part of the design and actually space allocations.
Appreciate that. And in addition, was there any discussion? I mean, can you maybe provide a little bit of the reasoning of why the fire department is looking at wanting to just do the exception rather than the normal process? I mean, could you provide me some of those reasoning?
Sure. The original selection process was pretty detailed and intensive as far as identifying the scope of what we were doing at the time, which location is the primary change currently and obviously with a new building. So we felt that the existing or the original process likely vetted our options, and we don't feel that rerunning this, this particular issue or researching or searching for another consultant would change the outcome significantly. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball, but I...
Sure.
Given the work that's been done and the previous interview process, we felt that this is where we would end up again, so...
Was anyone else contacted? I mean...
At this particular time, I don't believe so. I don't believe so. We didn't have a reason to at this point, so...
And if I may, just my last question. Have other design firms actually been used on other fire stations?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Thank you. I guess that kind of interests me that we have used other design firms in the past, and so it may be comparable to designing and doing some of the similar design work on this. And again, I guess I'm still at the crux of where we stand as a city, so I'll yield.
Thank you, Jordan. We'll go to Dave Davis. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked some of the same questions, and maybe the analogy that I was able to come up with might help Alderman Mason a little bit. Given the fact that we haven't actually designed a structure, but rather we're looking at consultants at this juncture, it would be much like the fire department going through the process of hiring a new firefighter. And in the process, at the time of hiring this firefighter, the decision was made to assign them to a different station than they had originally intended. We still needed a firefighter. We still have the same criteria. We still have to hire the same person. We just have assigned them to a different location, and that's pretty much what we've done here. We still have the same criteria. We still have a need to design the best station possible. We just, instead of doing it with an existing building and the confines that were there, we've moved across the street to a blank slate, but we still need the same firefighter with the same... we still need the same firefighter with the same criteria. Does that help, because that seemed to help me. Thank you.
Great discussion. Any further discussion? Motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirty-seven. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirty-seven is resolution number twenty-twelve tag zero four four revising the Infrastructure Development Partnership Fund guidelines.
Do we have a motion? Go ahead, Jordan.
I wanted to bring this forward. It was added to the legal and finance towards the end of our agenda as an attachment. And given the scope and the scope of the type of change that we're talking about in pulling from the Vision Fund to fund our IDPF, along with in looking more closely at it, that there is no limitation of the pulling of the two hundred thousand dollars to this fund. You know, there's no, it just says starting in twenty-eleven, so this could be in perpetuity. This obviously could have some long-term effects. And I guess I would rather like to ask for a motion to continue to the next legal and finance if I can, given those reasons.
We give first go to Pauline Sumption and then the floor will be open for motions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, in the resolution, it says that it will be established at one million dollars with two hundred thousand dollars each year beginning in two thousand and eleven. So there is a maximum amount on that because that was approved as part of the last round of the twenty-twelve funding.
Thank you. So I do just want to then establish this will just end in twenty fifteen, so this is one cycle.
The funding from the Vision Fund will end in twenty fifteen unless as part of the next round of Vision funding, it is extended. However, the way that the resolution is set up, this would establish a revolving loan fund for economic development purposes. So once the original million dollars is loaned out, as the payments come back in for principal and interest on those loans, that would come back into revolving loan fund to be loaned out again for economic development purposes. So it's just one more tool that we're trying to add to the toolbox for that purpose.
I appreciate that. I guess my concern is just the ability of this to creep onto future administrations. You know, if it is not clearly delineated that, you know, here's the limit that we're setting. In addition, this would obviously affect, you know, the amount of money that can be allocated out of the Vision Fund because we are taking this and allocating it to another source. So I just, I guess that's kind of why there's a lot to think about in this. And I guess I would still like to have a little more time to deliberate on something that potentially could be a long-term dedication.
Okay. Any further discussion or a motion? We'll go to Dave Davis.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Peterson for approval. Any further discussion? Ron Sasso. Ron?
I definitely, I have to agree with my colleague here, Alderman Mason. I do believe this is a good option in looking at it moving forward, but it's also something that we might want to take a little bit more time if, and look at feedback. I know this is one of the, one of the things a lot of people are always careful with, the Vision twenty, well, the Vision Fund now. But I know myself, I'd like to see more of it go for infrastructure. And then I think the other, the other part of that can also be, are we, is this the best amount that we're looking at and should we be looking at more? So, thank you.
Motion is for approval. Any further discussion? We'll go to Steve Laurenti. Steve?
I just, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to voice my support for it. I think, I think there's an end game here. It would have to be reauthorized after five years, is my understanding. So I see there's an end game to it, but it's a very welcome funds towards public improvements and infrastructure, which is one of the things that I have always campaigned on. So this is a very, very positive step for the city to be, to use some of these Vision Funds because I think part of our best vision for this city is an extremely solid infrastructure. So I appreciate the efforts here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe something that might help our colleague Alderman Mason about program guidelines, it does limit it to five years. And I'm hoping that alleviates his concerns on it. And then especially the part about the revolving fund where the interest, and I'm going into paragraph three here, where the interest is paid back as well. So that goes into the infrastructure. So I guess I need a little bit more guidance on what your discomfort is on that. Alderman Mason, if I may inquire?
If I may?
If you-
I guess my concern really comes down to, and it's a general concern, but specifically not specifically stating in the resolution that this is limited to a one-time deal. As stated by our finance director, this could be reauthorized and extended. I guess from my experience in looking at, you know, temporary things in the government, they commonly become long-term. And this would affect, you know, the allocation of funding from that, from our Vision Fund. And with some of the improvements in different programs that we're looking at coming up soon, I guess this is something that I think there's a little more deliberation that could be done here. But, you know, either way, I do agree with Alderman Laurenti that infrastructure is a top priority and it really comes down to how we want to do it. But this is something that, you know, if you don't limit it, come after twenty fifteen, the next administration, you know, may push this forward again and then we may find ourselves short in another area. So I guess that's what I'm looking at is that there's a lot of different dynamics, especially dealing with the Vision Fund. You're talking about millions of dollars that are accrued over a long term. And, you know, I guess there's a lot to think about. So that's my concern.
Mayor, if I may, just, if I may just respond to just a portion of this. While I appreciate Alderman Mason's concerns about that, I don't want to limit or handicap or tie the hands of future councils. So I'm, at this point, I'm, I can't go along with anything that would hamper a future council. So I'm comfortable with this. Thank you, Mayor.
Bonnie Peterson?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I guess I'll start the first one with our city attorney. If this was to, if this was to go past this five years, the council has to reapprove it, right? I mean, the way that it's written. We're not telling the next-
Well, I mean, even if you pass it today, a future council could change what you've done and reverse your direction.
Okay. That's, well, that's what I thought. And I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. And then my other question, I guess, is to our finance officer. Pauline, has this money already been set aside? We're not looking at new money? Or how is that?
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, there's four hundred thousand dollars that has been allocated to this. It's still all within the Vision Fund. The additional two hundred thousand dollars a year would come in the following three years. My thought process in presenting this is once this resolution is approved, is to set up a separate fund and transfer that four hundred thousand dollars out of the Vision Fund into that fund for loan purposes. And then as each year comes through, that two hundred thousand dollars would be transferred out there.
Okay. That's what I thought. And then I think it's really good that we're going to do this revolving loan fund so that same money keeps being reused. And I think that's a tremendous advantage for the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. And if I could jump in and add a few things that might help clarify the process. The reason this came forward is because the, we have the Opportunity Capture Fund Committee and we have the IDPF Fund. The IDPF Fund is not a new fund. It's not a new, it's not a new process. It's been around for quite a while, but it has been dormant. And it also has been refunded to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars a year for five years. Correct? And so in the, knowing that the council and the administration, we've been discussing ways to streamline processes and have less committees rather than more, rather than bringing forward a list of appointments for the IDPF Fund, we're bringing forward a request to essentially merge Opportunity Capture and IDPF, and the IDPF Committee. This will allow that committee to do both grants and loans. And there's still a high-level accountability, Jordan. I very much appreciate your questions. But really what is driving this is the need to consolidate and streamline. So. Any, we'll go to Gary Brown. Gary?
Call it what?
Question's been called. Any objections to comment the question? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is to approve item number thirty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We're on continued items, continued consent calendar items, items forty-six and forty-seven. Can we have motion to continue both until May seven?
So move.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on non-consent items, items forty-eight through seventy-two A. Can we have a motion to open public comment?
So move.
Motion by Mason, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two speaker request forms, both for items, both for item sixty-three. And we'll first go to Carol Rose McMahon. Carol?
Yeah.
Item sixty-three.
Thanks, everybody, for taking the time and talking to me. I talked to several of you today, expressing my concerns about the rezoning of eight oh nine and eight eleven Fairview Street. That property is adjoining my property on eight oh seven Fairview Street and my business, Fancy's Flowers, on the corner of Fairview and Mount Rushmore Road. I realize that the zoning request is not directly affecting me right now, but earlier you were talking about the historic preservation. And I'm here kind of talking about the future preservation of my property and what I had maybe hoped for in the future. I bought the property over twelve years ago and I was told at the time that it was zoned three property or three houses back. So I felt like it was a good investment at the time, not only for right now, but for in the future. I know that there's only so much room on Mount Rushmore Road. This is a corner lot. And I felt like it would be a very good investment for the future. With it now being changed or up for being changed, I feel like that, that there's a threat for the future for me and what I may want to do with the property, or possibly another business may be coming in and wanting to develop that corner. One of you today said that the city would never approve anything more building there on that corner on Mount Rushmore Road. I find like, I feel like that's kind of tying the hands of people for anything in the future, that if that, that decision has been already firmly made. My question would be is why years ago did the planning and zoning or the council decide to zone three houses back for general commercial? And now they want to take it away. I was referred to the Mount Rushmore Road corridor study, which I tried to read parts of it and try to understand some of it. But one of the main things there that I got out of it was that this group does not want any more encroaching on the residential area. And I can appreciate that. However, up and down Mount Rushmore Road, a majority of the property has already been developed commercial, three houses back, and continues to be done. I also read in there, and Bonnie I know was trying to explain to me earlier, that you say north, south, and east is being all commercial, but west of this property is all residential. Am I going over time?
You have about twenty seconds.
Okay. I feel like I would be harmed by this. And I would be greatly distressed by doing this. And why change something now when it really doesn't need to be changed?
Thank you. Then we'll go to Corey Price, item sixty-three. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mayor and council, for hearing my side of this today. My property is eight eleven Fairview Street. And it's possible, you know, when I purchased the property years ago, that I was ignorant in its zoning status and didn't inquire about it. But, but to, I guess, refute, I guess, McMahon's thoughts about it would cause her great despair in the rezoning application of those properties. Well, obviously, it's causing some despair for my neighbor who's trying to refinance his property and get a lower rate. And it could possibly affect me in the future if I was to wish to sell my property as it, as with new banking regulations. Obviously, they would look more closely at the use of the property and how it is zoned. And a lot of, I guess, her argument is based upon speculation. She has not come to myself or my neighbor on the possible purchase of our properties and/or if someone must to purchase her property and may look at our properties. I don't believe that they would give us fair dollar as that would be anywhere from seventeen to twenty-five dollars a square foot, based upon our current assessment. I feel also that the planning commission is right in its decision with a nine oh favor for approval of rezoning these properties and to help preserve a neighborhood that has been a neighborhood for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do not have any further speaker request forms on items forty-eight through seventy-two A. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on item number forty-eight. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty-eight is second reading ordinance number fifty-eight oh three supplemental appropriation number two for twenty-twelve, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Forty-nine, Jordan?
Item forty-nine is second reading ordinance number fifty-eight thirteen, an ordinance to update alcoholic beverage license regulations by amending chapter five point one two of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty, Jordan?
Item fifty is second reading ordinance number fifty-eight eleven, an ordinance specifying who may institute amendments to the zoning of property and the comprehensive plan by amending section seventeen point five four point zero four zero of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-one, Jordan?
Item fifty-one is second reading ordinance number fifty-eight twelve, an ordinance repealing section seventeen point five zero point zero five zero through seventeen point five zero one oh five. And this is regarding the plan developments and new plan development overlay districts, PUDs, and administrative exceptional regulations, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-two, Jordan?
Item fifty-two is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight seventeen, an ordinance to allow modular homes and manufactured home parks by amending section fifteen point four eight point zero one zero and section fifteen point four eight zero nine zero, chapter fifteen point four eight of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-three.
Item fifty-three is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight eighteen, an ordinance enacting the two thousand and nine International Building Code by repealing chapter fifteen point one two of the REPSMIS Code in its entirety and adopting a new chapter fifteen point one two of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-four.
Item fifty-four is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight eight nineteen, and this is an ordinance adopting the two thousand and nine International Residential Code by repealing chapter fifteen point one three of the REPSMIS Code in its entirety and adopting a new chapter fifteen point one three of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifty-five.
Fifty-five is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight twenty, an ordinance adopting the two thousand and nine International Property Maintenance Code by repealing chapter fifteen point one four of the REPSMIS Code in its entirety and adopting a new chapter fifteen point one four of the REPSMIS- point one-four of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifty-six?
Fifty-six is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-one, an ordinance adopting the two thousand nine International Existing Building Code by repealing chapter fifteen point fifteen of the REPSMIS Code in its entirety and adopting a new chapter fifteen point fifteen of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifty-seven, Jordan?
Fifty-seven is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-two, an ordinance adopting the two thousand eleven National Electrical Code with amendments by repealing chapters fifteen point one-six and five point two-eight of the REPSMIS Code in their entirety and adopting a new chapter fifteen point one-six of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifty-eight, Jordan?
Item fifty-eight is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-three, an ordinance repealing chapter fifteen point two-six of the REPSMIS Code in its entirety and adopting a new chapter fifteen point two-six of the REPSMIS Code entitled Mechanical Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Sasso. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jordan?
Item fifty-nine is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-four, an ordinance enacting the two thousand nine International Fuel Gas Code by repealing chapter fifteen point two-two of the REPSMIS Code in its entirety and adopting a new chapter fifteen point two-two of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mason, second by Sasso. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sixty?
Excuse me. Item sixty is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-five, an ordinance allowing businesses in their central business district to sell products on the sidewalk immediately adjacent to their businesses during special events by amending section twelve point twelve zero two zero of the REPSMIS Code, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? We'll go to Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to actually take a quick moment and say that I think this is an excellent revision to our code, and I think this definitely addresses a lot of the concerns that were previously had. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the City Attorney's Office for moving so quickly to bring this forward. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sixty-one?
Item sixty-one is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight fourteen, this rezoning from office commercial district to general commercial district, and this is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of East Sturmer Road and Shelby Avenue, and I believe, is there, is this going to be continued? I would make a motion for continuing.
We have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Go to Jerry Wright.
I believe the petitioner's representative is here. Do they want to address this issue as to the postponement? Yes or no? You don't have to.
Jerry, if you could direct a relatively specific question to the petitioner.
No, I understand.
He understands. Mr. Kostineski represents La-Z-Plus P-Six, and I had a look on his face like there was some concern about this postponement. I mean, have you read that wrong?
Just a little confusion.
If you can identify yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Lawrence Kostineski, centerline, representing La-Z-Plus P-Six Land Company. I assume you all got my email. Don't know if everybody read it or not. Probably should be careful what I wish for, but the Planning Commission approved this nine-zero, and that's a tough crowd with general commercial zoning, particularly with residential not too far away, you know? I mean, so, I mean, is there, you know, I don't hang out with a lot of council people with the exception of one, and he usually makes me go buy beer.
Coffee.
So, I guess I don't understand the dynamic. I mean, I've been told that it had something to do with rezoning in Wildwood, and the petitioner was out of sequence and made a big presentation at first reading when I thought everybody knew. No, 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 no presentations at first reading, second reading. Council people got turned around on the issue. Do I have that right or no? And there was some discomfort? No? Well, maybe ask the question in a different way. What, the continuation? I mean, what is it we're attempting to do with the continuation?
Jerry, do you have a...
I'm not arguing against it, but don't misunderstand me. I'm just trying to understand it, because I'm going to have a client who's going to ask me what, and I can't answer him right now.
Jerry, you have the floor.
I'll yield it to the Council for comment to the, those that want to postpone it. Maybe give Mr. Kostineski some information.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
I think there might be a little confusion that this morning, when we were at Agenda Review, we were looking at these, I think we were under, we had assumed it hadn't already gone to Planning Commission, and so we were saying we were going to continue it, still allow it to go through, but having looked at this more closely after that meeting, you already have gone through the Planning Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
And so for myself, unless my, one of my colleagues thinks there's some other reason that we can't approve it, I think we, I think there might have just been that misunderstanding this morning that we were trying to be so efficient, we were actually inefficient, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for continuation. Go to Jordan Mason.
Thank you, and yeah, it was my understanding that we were going to continue this, but that may be wrong.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying it's right, wrong.
One moment, please. Jordan's still on the floor.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. However, I will say that from my personal point of view and looking at this rezoning, I am a bit concerned about the adjacent properties in this area, and I will lay that out flat right now if we decide not to continue it. And my concern is mostly the proximity to other neighborhoods and the difference between the, we already have office commercial by the high-traffic area, and now we're moving general commercial behind the office commercial area closer towards the residential, and it seems to me that normally it's flipped around to where we have general commercial towards the high-traffic area with office commercial in between, and it seems to be kind of a change. So, I will lay that out. With that, I'll yield.
We have no further lights. The motion on the floor is, we'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to concur with Alderman Mason. I share some of the same concerns that I was willing to continue it just because I would like to see where this is going. If we take this to a vote tonight, I'm going to have to vote against it. If we take it to continue it tonight, I can vote to continue so we can learn where you're headed with it. But right now, I'm, I have the same opinion as, I really have to question why we're moving from a office commercial, which seems to be close to the residential, and turning that into general commercial. It doesn't appear as though there's any sale pending, as though there's any development pending. It looks like it's entirely speculation, and yet, those folks that have residents around there seem to be very concerned that their buffer is being deteriorated, and I guess I'd like a little bit more comfort from where that buffer is going before I can sign on. Thank you.
We'll go to Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. That's my board, that's my area, although that's where Charity lives. She gives them more. The calls that I am getting, and they're not tremendous, but I have gotten several calls, by that I mean less than ten, mainly from people that own the townhouses and down around by the church and that. The concern from some of the single-family, and especially the people in the townhouses, where is the barrier line? Now, I know when I made my statement at the Planning Commission, Mr. Davis came back and said that there's going to be medium-density residential back behind the commercial, going to keep it as a buffer and that, but again, that's, I got some calls even after that came out, and people are still concerned. Where is that? What kind of guarantee, if there is such a thing, that can they get that they're not going to have commercial right up next to them on the street? It's an uncomfortable level for them and that, so that's why I'll probably support the continuation on this, just so maybe it gets some clarity. Mr. Davis or you can come up and give the neighbors down there a comfort level. How you do that, I don't know, Cost. Thank you.
We'll go to Jerry Wright.
Question of the Planning Department. I understand that the current zoning is office commercial, and we want to go to general commercial. What does the land use plan show that property as?
Right now?
Yes.
Residential.
Any further discussion? The motion is to continue. Without a question from the Council, the public comment period has been closed, so unless there's a question from the...
May I ask, Kostineski, Mr. Larry Kostineski, you have a comment to make?
I don't know if that's going to cut it, Jerry. The mayor's giving you the look.
If you could be more specific, please.
Ask me about the land use plan.
Okay. What do you know about the land use plan, Mr. Kostineski?
Thank you for asking, Councilman Wright.
We get this protocol down.
I would ask, I would ask Brett to pull it up quickly on Rapid Map and tell me what that land use plan is.
I'm looking right at the staff report right now.
And it says?
It's showing residential on it.
Really?
Wow. Okay, there's going to be some dispute automatically, but anyway, I'm perfectly content on behalf of P-Six to let you all continue it for the reasons you stated. Don't want to push that very far. Okay, two things. I assume that's going to be the exact same motion for the one immediately following, and then I ask you, Mr. Mayor, I understand the continuation from here, not quite clear if it's first reading or second reading. Hopefully, it's second reading, but how do I get back? How does P-Six get back to the collective group and kind of present what they, is it going to go to a Public Works Committee meeting, a Legal Finance Committee meeting? How's this going to work?
That would be up to the motion maker. At this point, the motion is to continue to the next city council meeting, so it wouldn't make a stop off at committee unless it's, unless the motion is amended.
And we could do it at the next council meeting. It just might take a little while. It's entirely up to you guys.
We'll go to Ron. Jerry, you still have the floor, actually. Okay, Ron Sasso?
I believe the continuation would definitely be the correct way to go, given just the questions, and just so we can all make sure we have everything that we need before making a decision on this.
Jordan Mason?
Thank you, Mayor, and I guess I would just address this key. I definitely understand, you know, your concerns from your point of view. I would recommend, you know, contacting us individually. I know that I would definitely be willing to take additional time to go out there with you, walk the site, look at some of the different aspects, but I do want to be absolutely straight-up with you. Where I'm at tonight, I do have concerns, so it would be my recommendation to contact me personally. My number's readily available on the website, and please give me a call. Thank you.
How many more can, what's the magic number for?
Or five. Five.
We'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarifications, because there seems to be a little confusion, and this may be a friendly amendment to Alderman Mason's continuation motion, but this would be a continuation to the next council meeting for items, both item sixty-one and sixty-two, so that we don't have to go through this discussion again momentarily.
Thank you. And that's okay with the secondar?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion has now been changed. We have a motion to continue items sixty-one and sixty-two to the next city council meeting, which is what date, Charlene? Sorry to spring that on you. On May seven. So, these two items will be continued to May seven. Any further discussion on items sixty-one and sixty-two? All in favor of continuation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number sixty-three, Jordan?
Item sixty-three is first reading ordinance number fifty-eight sixteen, this rezoning from general commercial district to medium-density residential district, and this located at eight oh nine and eight eleven Fairview Street, and I'll yield the floor.
Okay, we have a motion. We're on item sixty-three. John Roberts?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Roberts, second by Wright, to approve item number sixty-three. Any discussion? We'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
I had talked to the, to Brad, our Planning Commission, our community development, I don't know, it's been renamed, head of our department there, and he indicated what I had told you earlier on the phone today, that, you know, this change doesn't affect your property, you know, at this time, and there's no guarantee, though, because like right now, if that house, your house would be torn down to be a parking lot, you'd probably have to just build a fence or something between your house and the other houses. But, of course, we don't know what the rules could be in the future, you know, when it gets to be that, and I don't know, you made a comment earlier about that your, would your location, I don't know who told you that, your location now could never be changed or your building, was that because of the historical value of the historical preservation?
If you could come up, please, if you'd like to answer that question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Carol, if you could restate your name for the record, please.
My name?
Yes.
Oh, Carol Rose McMahon.
Thank you. Go ahead.
No, the city won't allow any more commercial development on Mount Rushmore Road, period.
Okay, but that doesn't say that you can't, I mean, I don't, do you remember who told you that it could never be changed, your building that would be there now? That's...
Well, that it, that the city would never approve anything commercial three houses back, where my property is located. Even though it has allowed many businesses to go back that far and further, there apparently now, the agenda is not to allow any more development on Mount Rushmore Road going back.
Okay. Mr. Limbaugh, would that be, I guess my concern right now is that, or what, from the comment she made earlier, was that it's a commercial business right now, and if she wanted to sell that business and her house that are still zoned commercial, would she still be able to do that under the current rules?
Would she be able to sell her home as commercial property?
Yeah, well, the two of them, that, you know, that piece up, you know, the two lots into one, because she's saying she was told that there would be no more commercial development, but yet, it is a commercial development, so that's where I'm confused, if that's a misstatement or...
Yeah, whatever the zoning is on her property right now, that's what she could market it as.
Okay, so she could...
But not for anything further.
Okay, okay, so, but we have to, when we look at this, we have to look at it as just, you know, your, your property against the other landowner's property and balance that, so, so it is unfortunate, and it's also, at the same time, if the, if we change, Mr. Limbaugh, if we change, go ahead and approve this tonight, and we let that go into medium-density residential, is there anything currently on the books to prevent it later to go back to general commercial?
You know, with any zoning application or comprehensive plan, it's up to the Council and the Planning Commission to make that determination, so it certainly wouldn't prohibit it from going back to commercial at a future date.
Having said that, though, I know that there's always a risk. I mean, once you change something, and that's what the other gentleman that was up here speaking on this issue earlier, too, that he needs to be certain that this is how he wants it to go, because... that he needs to be certain that this is how he wants it to go, because, you know, you may not be able to change it, so, thank you.
We have no further lights. The motion on the floor is to approve. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Mayor, if I may just add, maybe perhaps a little bit more confusion to the whole process. I took a walk down in this neighborhood, and the addresses that we are concerned about, that Carol is bringing forward, is thirteen oh one Mount Rushmore Road and also eight oh seven Fairview. That's the property that she is concerned about as far as, if I understand your letter, Carol, it had to do with future speculation of what that property could be about. As I was reading that a little bit farther on the future land use in that area, I hope I didn't, I wasn't mean that it was giving you the indication that it was set in stone it was going to be that way. If it gets this way tonight, approve that, as the change goes through to medium-density residential, chances are it will not be changed back to commercial. It could, but chances are it may not change back. So as far as the value of your property over there at thirteen oh one and Mount Rushmore Road and eight oh seven Fairview, the chances of that property diminishing in value is probably pretty small based on this reason right here, as eight oh nine and eight eleven Fairview changing that. So that's probably not the reason why, if anything, and there's probably other circumstances that probably come into play prior to this reason as causing a reduction in your property value. For example, a fire to your establishment. That's probably a higher-like probability, I should say, of that taking place, rather than this being the cause of the diminishing value of your property. So it looks like eight oh nine and late eleven would be suitable for changing over to medium-density residential. I hope I clarified a couple of points for you, just based on that, so... And if I gave you the indication otherwise, I apologize for that, and that was not what my intent was for, for to do that. So, thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie. The motion on the floor is to approve item sixty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now going to take a brief recess, and we'll reconvene a quarter after. We will reconvene the meeting, and we'll go to item number sixty-four. Jordan, could you read item sixty-four to the agenda for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Item sixty-four is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign contract for construction of public improvements through private developer tax increment district number seventy-two between Technology Housing LLC and the City Rapid City. And I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sixty-five, Jordan?
Sixty-five is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the City Rapid City, Technology Housing LLC, and the Great Western Bank, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sixty-six, Jordan?
Sixty-six?
He doesn't like me anymore, Jordan. Go right ahead.
Okay, I'll read it off. Award the contract for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll take a shot at it. Award the contract for twenty-twelve custodial services for park shelters and restrooms throughout the park system to Black Hills Workshop in the amount of sixty-eight thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars, and authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the contract, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason and a second by Gary Brown. And we'll go to Ron Sasso.
I will be abstaining from this, as that is one of my employers.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Ron Sasso. Bids, Pauline?
First item for bids is the twenty-twelve miscellaneous improvement projects. We received three bids on this. Recommendation is to award the base bid plus alternate one in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-five cents to Stanley J. Johnson Concrete Contractor.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight is for the twenty-twelve microservicing project, and we're actually requesting that this be continued until the May seventh council meeting, so we can allow the contractor to receive their South Dakota excise tax.
Okay, we have a motion by Peterson and a second by Davis to continue to May seven? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine is for the St. Joseph Street Joint Ceiling Project. We received three bids on this. Recommendation is to award the bid to Stanley J. Johnson Concrete Contractor in the amount of eighty-two thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Motion by Peterson, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seventy?
Seventy is for the sweeper broom refills. We had bid this out one other time, and we got authorization to rebid. We received three bids on this item. Recommendation is to award the total bid to Old Dominion Brush Company, Inc., in the amount of twenty thousand twenty dollars.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seventy-one?
Seventy-one is for two new current model year vacuum street sweepers. Recommendation is to award the bid to She &amp; Mack Sales and Equipment. The, with the unit price, it's four hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred ninety dollars, trade-in value of fifteen thousand for a total bid of four hundred eleven thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. Sanitation products did not meet specifications.
Okay, we have a motion by Roberts and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion on item seventy-one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seventy-two?
Seventy-two is for four new current model year one-ton four-by-four regular cab long box pickups for the street division, and the recommendation is to award the bid to McKee Ford Lincoln, Inc., in the amount of ninety-six thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars for the total bid.
Motion by Nordstrom and second by Roberts. Go to Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a quick question, and in my time here on the council, I guess I've wondered, we seem to buy a lot of these pickups, and each day and every day, I drive past on Omaha Street, and I see a fleet, an entire parking lot of pickups right next door. And so I guess I am going to finally ask, the purpose for this purchase and many of the other purchases that we've made in the past couple of months, I guess I'd like to kind of know, are we utilizing our current fleet to its fullest?
And I will defer that to Mr. Teck.
Go to Dale Teck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll attempt to answer this. This is a little out of my area of expertise. However, I believe that these four trucks that are being purchased for the street department are actually used for street maintenance purposes, primarily for snow plowing and spreading of sand salt mixture. They'll be loaded down with a sander box, if you will, in the bed of the truck. That's one of the reasons why it was specced out to be a one-ton truck. I believe all the vehicles you see parked across the street in the lot are inspector vehicles, and they're typically half-ton or the mid-size type pickups that would not be able to effectively carry a sanding box and a snow plow on the front of them. I believe that there are specific uses for some of these vehicles, and these that are being bid today do have a specific use.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. We'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I would be terribly remiss if I didn't make a comment when we finally have a local dealer actually able to sell us some trucks, not to say how pleased I am to have a local dealer finally able to sell us some trucks. And how that, in a few short months, I won't be able to say that, and that I would hope that somewhere along the line, we will still move forward with whether we can do it on a local level or encourage it at a state level, that we find a way to have some type of a local preference on some of these bids. I just, it's just a personal thing for me to see these going to state bid and to have our local tax dollars going to a purchase of a vehicle from somewhere else across the state, just because it happens to be on the state bid process. So with that being said, congratulations to the local vendor.
We'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that I've already mentioned to Alderman Doyle about having a look at this through the Compass Committee, and this is one where Public Works had looked at some of the other, whether or not we could reallocate those one-ton pickups for a different department, though I guess, as I understand it, the ones that are used for plowing get beaten down pretty badly. So, but I do believe this is something that we should look at in greater depth, just because there are so many departments that we're dealing with, and we have such a huge fleet that if we're discarding something, anything we can use. And then also, Alderman Davis, I know that would be a state law change, so that was something that was brought up previously. So that would be great if somebody at the state level would take that on, so, thank you.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
I think the Compass program will be great. I don't know if we need to just have all our department heads, and maybe this has already been done before. I believe the police department in the past figured out some ways to get longer life out of some of their vehicles. And I just think it's a philosophy for the city. Now, I don't want to put our workers in danger or anything like that, but to utilize some strategies where we can get longer life out of our vehicles. And like I said, I don't know if Compass is the place to look at that, or, like I said, I don't know if have... Does anyone know if that has been looked at already in the last five years or something? Extending life of vehicles or just kind of... Okay, because I am correct with the great police force, Chief Hollander, that y'all did figure out a way to extend life for some of your vehicles? Okay, and I think you feel that's been successful, or at least maybe last year when you reported on it, it was. I don't know if you're thinking the same this year, that it was successful still.
Or Steve, you want to take a crack at that? Steve Hollander?
Yes, thank you. Our program has been successful, but the biggest change in our program was changing all of our maintenance services over to the city street department. And if I'm not mistaken, that's where this maintenance is done, on Public Works vehicles now. Great crew of mechanics over there. They take the time to educate themselves, and they do things by the book. We've experienced significant cost savings just by doing that very thing, so...
Right, so, anyway, I know that Compass will help, but I, like I said, I don't know if Compass is going to always be the solution, that there might be other, you know, more efficient solutions in the future, so, thank you.
We'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Share you a little experience. In nineteen eighty-seven, we started Fleet Management Program in City Rapid City, and we started looking at the life expectancy of the equipment in streets, sanitation, traffic, and so forth. And I know we did initial work with the police department. I would recommend that members of the council, for their own information and understanding, make an appointment to go down to the street department and meet with Donnie's staff, in particular Jenna, and go over the fleet maintenance program that they have. I know we used one similar to it in solid ways, where we did look at the life of the vehicles. We did take them to their life expectancy and managed them, I think, quite well. And it has been done for many, many years. I don't think it's anything that needs to be reinvented. I think it needs to be supported and maybe refined and worked with. The particular vehicles that they're talking about, these four, are driven by the supervisors in the street department. These are the guys that are working with the crews twenty-four-seven, in particular in snowstorms and emergencies, and they've got to have a good horse. So I appreciate your support in getting this for them. That's what they're for. And I know historically, we always, if we had a vehicle that was not in the condition to be used in twenty-four-seven activities, we would pass it off to a lesser use. And the city's always done that, to put your mind at ease a little bit. And it's always something that we can look at and work on, but there is a program currently underway, and I would really recommend that you go down and spend some time and come into an understanding with it. It's a good program. They look at what it costs to buy, what it costs per mile, what it costs per hour. They look at fuel, tires, repairs, labor, everything. It's quite an involved program. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try not to repeat too much of what Jerry said, but I want to ditty a lot of the things that Jerry has already spoken about. In fact, I would encourage one step further on the fleet maintenance. We do have a fleet maintenance supervisor that is on staff right now, and that does the oversight of all the vehicles within the city and the maintenance and everything. So I would be wholeheartedly encouraged that that person come before, at least the Public Works Committee, to give us a presentation. I think it's a good program. What they've done over there is really done a magnificent job about turning that division around. And as Chief Hollander has said, that the vehicles that came from the police department, our crews now are doing that in-house. And from all the indications that I'm getting, they're doing a fantastic job on the light vehicle maintenance part of it. And when it comes to vehicles like what we just gave approval for purchasing right now on the one tons, another division was asked to take a look at those vehicles that are being replaced with this set of vehicles, and the other division was, that was taking an examination of that to extend the life of these vehicles, said that these have been pretty well field-tested, so they couldn't even justify the use of making it as a hand-me-down vehicle. So I, while I appreciate and applaud the council's appreciation for extending the life of all the vehicles, we did go through that years passed, and we were driving around with vehicles that were... The floorboards were basically dropping out, and the people were having to drive in vehicles where you could see the ground underneath of you, and then if you can imagine what it was like in the wintertime with those vehicles. So if I can really encourage the council to have our fleet manager come forward and give us a presentation, I think that would be quite an eye-opener for us. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie. And before we proceed to the vote, I would just like to make a comment regarding the excellent discussion tonight. There was some discussion regarding local bid preference option, and just wanted to state that Pauline Sumption and I did meet with Senator Bruce Rampleberg in December or January to discuss that very idea, and he was willing to bring forward legislation. He worked with LRC, Legislative Research Council, and the solution, this has come up in the past with the municipal league, and sadly, the solution is more complicated than the problem itself. What we can do as a community is, instead of automatically buying with the state contract if we want, we, my understanding is, Pauline, we could just go out for bid on vehicles. And then if Wagner Auto or whoever usually gets them in peer wants to bid, they're still allowed, they would still be allowed to bid. They couldn't be excluded from that process, so we could do that. But I want to thank everyone for that discussion tonight. Would you like to add to that?
If I might, you are correct, and it appears in this case that is exactly what we did. We went out for bid instead of purchased it off of state bid. We've also in the past given local entities, whether it be McKee or Rapid Chevy or whoever the dealer is, the opportunity to meet the state bid, so that way, if they can match the price, we will still buy it locally. So there are a couple of options for us there.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seventy-two A, this is to acknowledge the receipt of a letter from the state's attorney regarding... Item 72A, this is to acknowledge the receipt of a letter from the state's attorney regarding Eifritz Hookah Lounge. We'll go to Steve Hollander, our police chief. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Attached to the agenda is a copy of the letter from State's Attorney Glenn Brenner, addressed to Stephen Wesselack, who is the attorney for Eifritz Hookah. And the letter basically just declares that the business is not in compliance with the law, and specifically, that is South Dakota Codified Law 34-46-19, where some exceptions to the smoking prohibition are given, and the intent of the letter is to let them know that they can either sell tobacco products, or they can sell alcohol, but they can't sell both, according to state law. So, Mr. Brenner's given them 15 days to come into compliance. I read in the paper that Mr. Wesselack intends to ask the court for a declaratory judgment, where in my layman's interpretation, that means he's going to ask the judge if it's really illegal, rather than relying on Mr. Brenner to conclude that. But I can tell you, short of an injunction from the court, we intend to start enforcing this on or about April 29. So, we're hoping for compliance. That's the right thing. There is the issue, and it's pointed out in the newspaper, and I think it's been talked about here also, that in 2010, Mr. Brenner decided not to litigate the issue of the Hookah business selling alcohol, and all I know about it is, at that time, there was a slightly different product being sold and smoked at Eifritz. Today, that product is tobacco. It is heated and burned with a, with fire, a piece of coal, smoke is produced. The tobacco and its byproducts are inhaled into lungs and blown out into the air for other people to ingest. There are mounting studies on this, so scientifically, I believe we're going to be able to show very easily, this is smoking. It is nothing more than smoking. And, so that's the, that's the whole story.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion to acknowledge, or any discussion? Motion by Peterson, and a second by Sasso to acknowledge the report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 72B, this is update on the town hall meeting. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Baron. You certainly, and Alderman Laurenti can certainly chime in here as well. For the people that arrived late at the meeting here, we're holding a Ward Two Town Hall meeting this Thursday, April 19, 6:00 p.m., at the Journey Museum, and we'll be holding it within the Wells Fargo Theater, and we'll, we'll get a little update on what's happening at the Journey Museum, and people are welcome to take a walk through, and so we can kind of get, give them an idea of what is taking place at the Journey Museum. And in addition to that, we want to invite the public to come to this town hall meeting to talk about what they want to talk about, not just what we as council members have to introduce to them. At this point, I can't think of anything else that, that, that needs to be added to this from my point, so I certainly welcome comments from other people here.
Thank you, Richie. Do we have a motion to acknowledge? Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts to acknowledge 72B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on public hearing items 73 through 75. We have motion to open public hearing. Motion by Roberts, second by Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any speaker request forms. We will keep the public hearing open. We're on to items 73 and 4. Can we have a motion to continue both of those items to May 7? We have a motion by Brown, and a second by Peterson to continue items 73 and 4 to May 7. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Davis, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have non-consent public hearing, item 75. Do we, Jordan, can you read this into the record for us?
Absolutely. This is second reading ordinance 5802, and this is rezoning from office commercial district to general commercial district, and this is located at 4831 and 4905 Fifth Street, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Brown. Any discussion? We'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
I haven't re-looked at this property, but is this property over in the same area that we were discussing earlier, that we're holding up for two weeks?
It's on the west side of the street.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to, I'll leave it up to you guys if you think it's appropriate to move forward with it, based on your concerns earlier tonight. Thank you.
The motion is for approval. Any further discussion? Motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 76, bill list. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so it is that which is before you at $4,795,205.15.
Motion by Davis, second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.